Call the meeting to order. Mr. Ryan, will you take the role? Yes. President Renditzky?
Here.
Councilperson Hendricks?
Here.
Councilperson Carroll?
Here.
Councilperson Charles?
Present.
Councilperson Farrell is absent. Councilperson Meese is not present. And I do acknowledge that Councilperson Neff was not going to attend this evening. You do have four of seven council members present, therefore a forum has been established for the meeting. And I'd also like to mention that Mayor Jeff Freed is present this evening. Junior Councilperson Jonah Markle, solicitor, Robert Cravitz. Assistant Borough Manager and Treasurer Sharon Badman. Administrative Assistant, every court secretary, Shelley Leavitt. And Borough Manager Paul Williams. Thank you. I do have a sign and sheet for those that are present or those that might want to speak to a particular topic this evening. I do see one more sign in over there. Behind the pack, let his person take a moment for silent reflection or prayer. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I. Amen. Jesus Christ alive, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In your package you have the council meeting minutes from March 7, 2016. Are there any additions, corrections, or if we got a motion?
Motion to accept. Seconded.
Move and seconded. All in favor, if you've been said by saying aye?
Aye.
Public comment, period. First, the H and L.
Last month, we had 23 incidents. We had one brush fire, one motor vehicle accident with extrication, five false alarms, two gas leaks, two medical assists, six MVA's without extrication, an overpressure rupture call, we had one, rescue call, we had one, structure fire, we had three, traffic control, we had one. We went to Chapman Township once, Middle Creek Township once, Montno Township four times, Hen Township five times, Seattle Borough Borough eight times, Schmoken Danborough once, Susquehanna Township once, Union Township once, Washington Township once, per estimated loss value of zero. We had 106 staff count for a total of 76.6 man-hours. And last month, we had our Easter egg hunt, open house, and chicken barbecue, which went well, but I do not have any of the numbers yet because we don't have all the bills in yet. So hopefully next month I can give you all the details. But it did go well. We sold out full one o'clock.
It was nice. It was a nice event.
The camera did show up.
Oh, did it? Good. I'm glad.
Yeah.
Any questions, Mr. Ryan? Thank you very much for your time.
Good job. Thank you.
In the packet, we have minutes of the meeting of the Board of Directors on Sales Group Projects from January. Unless anyone has anything to speak to that, we'll just move to the next one. We also have in our meeting packets the minutes of the Sales Group Team of Commerce from its February meeting. Some of us attend those. They're on council. Comments on that? Normally, we'd have a report from Councilman Meese about the Sales Group there wrecked the pool, but he's not here, so there'll be no comments to that this evening. Next on our list is Parks and Recreation Committee. Megan Willoughby did see, come in.
Yes, she's here. Parks and Recreation Committee meet this past month, so there isn't really any moves. I did notice, and I'm going to remind you, that I neglected last month to share with you that the Parks and Recreation Committee wanted to recommend making the River Home Committee a sub-commission, subcommittee, sorry, of Parks and Recreation. It's just kind of in order of business, but we wanted to let you know that we felt like they were part of us.
I don't know whether that requires any special action now.
I'm not really familiar with.
It's a committee that will be advisory to Parks and Recreation.
And we're advisory to you, so I guess it's just a matter of making sure everybody knows.
I think it sounds like an excellent idea.
Is that sound?
Yeah.
If there are any questions or other...
Next meeting date is?
April 26 at 7:00. This is Tuesday. We should be in the Keystone Room, as far as I understand, unless it's good, or we're supposed to be.
And have you gotten to meet Mackenzie Stover?
I have met Mackenzie, yes. Very impressed, delighted. And she intends to be at the next meeting.
Just let her know about the returns.
Okay. Well, I'll just bring her to speed.
Yes.
And work wouldn't change, maybe there's a little public pressure there, but thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Next, I am Mike Fisher from Senecot.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I trust that you've all received the Black Line Guidelines. We met with the Borough staff back on March 17, and we went through these guidelines in a fair amount of detail. And they were actually originally submitted as part of your grant application that was approved. We needed to put a draft guideline in with the understanding that it was something that the staff and the council had to vet and finally approve on before we actually put it into action. But the guidelines are framework, and I'd like to use this evening to discuss some of the highlights and details on them. The, if you recall, the Community Development Disaster Recovery Monies that you received, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Monies, you received at the beginning of the year for $500,000 was for the intention to assist homeowners that had received repetitive losses in the floodplain in respect to tropical Storm Lee and Hurricane Irene. And the program is specifically focused to assist owner-occupied units. And those owner-occupied units have to be income-eligible as per DCD, Department of Community and Economic Development Guidelines, which they're all part of, built into your guidelines here. The large part of our conversation that we had staff, with staff a couple weeks ago, was specific to how much assistance should we really provide to the homeowners in order for them to make the necessary repairs. And I like to put the repairs into two separate categories. One would be those individuals that are homeowners that want to elevate their entire structure above the 100-year floodplain. And then the second classification are those individuals that do not want to elevate their homes, but they do have repair needs based upon the flood damage that they've experienced in the past, and there's also potentially other code deficiency items. And also, there'll be a focus on elevating mechanical items and others such above the 100-year floodplain in order to help them to reduce flood loss and potentially help them to stabilize and reduce their flood insurance with the federal government. So the second category, those individuals that do not want to have their home completely elevated, we feel pretty comfortable based upon our previous experience of providing the rehabilitation programs throughout the region, that a value of $10,000 to rehabilitate one's home and to elevate various mechanical items above the floodplain, and to also do some lead work that would be required under the federal program, that that would be more than adequate, and let me restate that, $25,000 that would go towards the actual rehabilitation, and an additional $10,000 that would be made available to the homeowner to do lead work. And we're not necessarily talking about complete abatement of all lead in the house. What we're talking about is reduction of the lead hazard in the house and make sure that the contractors are performing the work in accordance to safe work standards under the lead rule that HUD has adopted. That will be a 0% deferred loan. That will be a mortgage that will be placed on the property. In the past, and all the other communities really didn't care in terms of what position that mortgage would be, whether it be in first, or second, or third. We just put a mortgage in the property, and the main intent was to avoid or to eliminate potential speculative repairs. We don't want people to get these public funds, fix the property up, and then say, hey, I could probably get a better sale value on my property, so let's turn around and sell it. So what we normally do is we forgive it for every year that they stay in their house, that's 20% per year, so after a five-year period, it's completely forgiven, so long as they don't sell the property or transfer the property. Now, council does have the authority to waive that on hardship cases if they so desire, and eventually someone needs to sell their property because they need to move into a nursing home of that nature, and there really isn't any proceeds left after the property is sold. And you, as a body, have the authority to waive that and not collect on whatever balance is left on that particular mortgage note. So that was the first category. The second category, which is a little bit tougher, because we haven't had any really direct experience in terms of actual costs and what it costs to do actually elevate a complete structure above a 100-year floodplain. We've heard numbers out there anywhere as little as $40,000 or $50,000 to as high as $200,000, $250,000. We do know, because when we put more than $25,000 of federal funds into a house, that we will have to do full lead abatement. That will add to the cost of doing business. So what we came up with, your staff and Senecot staff, as a recommendation for council to consider, is kind of a sliding scale, not necessarily sliding scale, it's actually an either-or type of thing, that you will provide up to $150,000 in assistance to elevate the whole home, or 150% of the market value, whichever is greater figure. And we determine market value by taking the assessed value, multiply the common level ratio the county is using at the time to come up with the market value. Or if the homeowner feels that their property is worth more than that, and they wish to get more, and they have a legitimate appraisal in hand, we would look at that as a means of establishing market value. So I think that's really probably the crux tonight, to discuss how much do you really want to provide in housing out there to individuals to elevate their house. Keep in mind that these individuals have to be income-eligible, that in all probability, they're not going to have a whole lot of other resources to put towards this, particularly maybe going out and borrowing it from the local banks, et cetera. A lot of our traditional rehab clients are the elderly, and they don't really want to go further debt in homeownership. We really don't know who we're going to get down there. I think at some point, when we decide, you as council decide exactly what level of services that you want to do, you make approval and adopt these guidelines, then we can begin to do our marketing and outreach to the community. And my suggestion would be is that on a particular day, we announce to the community that we'll be now taking pre-applications, and people can either contact our office or the Borough Office to receive a one-page pre-application. They fill that out, they submit it to either the Borough Office or our office, and it'll be kind of like a first-come-first-served. But keep in mind, the priority goes to individuals who are low or moderate income, who have repetitive losses from the two storms in 2011. Those are the folks that we will serve first, and then we'll see what we have left in our monies. You only have about a little over $400,000. So if we now do a lift and a complete house for $175,000, and we have two or three of those, well, then, you know, the money's gone. Now, with that said, originally, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, when they originally put this money out on the streets, they were advocating for grantees or applicants to put as much money as you think you're going to need. And we, the Borough, this Borough put in requests for over $600,000, almost $700,000. At the 11th hour, DCD decided across the board for everybody across the Commonwealth that they were going to limit each grant to $500,000, so they can get it out in the street to see if each community has the capacity to spend this. And the mindset is that if they do, then if you have more need and you spent your money, there's probably a real good chance for you to be able to go in and get some more funds. So once we launch this program, and we find out that, you know, there's maybe a half a dozen homeowners that need a lift down there, and we only have enough monies to do two or three, there's a pretty good probability that we can go in and get some more funds. Not a guarantee, but a pretty good probability. So staff, did I miss anything that you think is noteworthy that we should probably also cover?
Are these current HUD grades that are on here now?
They are. And they're supposedly going to change in June.
Oh, okay.
And the preliminary numbers that I saw actually shows them going down. But I want to make sure that I see them officially before we say they're going down.
If we qualify somebody prior to June, will they still be eligible?
If we qualify them and get them under contract, they'll be most definitely eligible.
Well, that was my question. What are the timeline for adopting the guidelines and committing the funds?
Well, if the council's prepared tonight, you can certainly adopt them this evening. If not, I would definitely suggest that you adopt them in the next meeting. And then we can begin the program right after that. We have until January of '19, 2019, to expand all funds.
January.
Yes, so I don't see a problem with that whatsoever. And if we do, you know, if we're still lingering with our last project, we'll probably go back and get an extension from the state. But I don't think we'll have a problem of meeting that first deadline.
So if you do a rehab, you can get $25,000 plus 10 for the lead abatement?
Correct.
If you don't need the lead abatement, can they use the 35?
We could do that. That's something that, yes, if that's, if you want to, if they don't need the lead, and if you want to have them give $35,000. The reason for the $25,000 threshold for rehab is because once you go over $25,000, then you have to do a full payment, and that becomes very costly. So we've been trying to avoid and steer clear from that from all of our programs that we've assisted throughout the region. But the issue of raising a house, in all probability, we're going to go over $25,000 anyway, so we're going to bite the bullet going into it, knowing that we're going to have to do full lead abatement on those houses. So you could, you could say, for those houses that do not need elevation, they could qualify up to $35,000 for full rehab if they do not have lead in the house. All houses that are predated or postdated 1978, in all probability, do not have lead in houses, because after that, it was illegal to apply by case payment. That's not to say that somebody might have something in their garage and slapped it on by their, but anything that predates 1978, we have to test, we have to go through, and we have to do a test on every house to determine how much lead's in the house, and then determine what is the appropriate protocol to reduce that lead hazard in that house. Yes?
How did they arrive at the 81% and the 19%?
Okay. The federal regulations stage, and this is very different than your normal Community Development Block Grant allocation that you get in most federal programs. Most federal programs are towards 100% of your funds, with few exceptions, have to go to benefit low and moderate income individuals, or those people that are 80% median or less. In respect to this particular legislation, they, they being Congress and subsequently HUD, said that they were going to make sure that at least 81% of the total funds that a given community receives goes to benefit low and moderate income people, or 80% median or less. The remaining balance, or 19%, can go towards individuals who are making, have incomes between 81% and up to 120%. That's why there is a little stipulation in there that we, that says that we could potentially set aside 19% after we serve all the people that are income-eligible above the 80%. So if we went down in there and we picked up three homeowners, and there was no other homeowners beyond that, and we were able to spend $300,000 and some change, and we had an individual that was just over that 81% median income or 80% median income, we could potentially provide them some services.
If we don't spend the full allotment, if we have more than $76,000 left below the 80% bracket, you still can't exceed the $76,000?
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
On, the homeowner is current on all payments of Borough taxes?
Yes.
Why not county and school taxes? If they're in Arrejon County, the place could go up for sheriff's sale in the process of the rehabilitation?
That's your discretion. If you want to include that, that was originally in there, but on our last meeting with your staff, that was struck out. So there's no federal requirement that addresses that. That is a local issue. So if you want to do the whole nine yards of Borough and the county, and the school district, and municipal, other fees, you can certainly add to that if you desire. That's your discretion.
On page seven, they're given the list of items that are eligible activities, energy conservation, handicap barrier removal, and alteration of housing unit interior, opening of space. What's that have to do with flood prevention with this federal requirement?
This is a rehab program with a flood resilience twist to it. We have to be doing rehabilitation in the structure to bring the structure up to basic living codes. At the same time, we're looking for opportunities to reduce flood loss. The items that I suggested, or that are in here, are eligible activities under the program, okay? In that, if you have an overcrowding situation, and we could maybe reconfigure some rooms around to make it more, less crowded, or if an individual has a mobility issue, for instance, the bedrooms on the second floor, and the bathrooms on the second floor, we could relocate that sleeping arrangements in the bathroom on the first floor. Those are eligible activities.
Once it's raised?
Well, once it's raised, or even if it's under a standard rehab activity as well, I mean, if remember, we're not raising it, if just an individual says, okay, we got repetitive loss, we need some fixing up done here because of the damage of the floodwater, and we also want our utilities raised from the basement up to the first floor, or whatever that 100-year floodplain line might be, we can do that. We'll take care of the code items, and we could then look at these other items which are eligible activities. It doesn't necessarily say that we're going to do them, it's saying that we can do them within that $35,000 rehabilitation that we have available.
Page nine, contracted participation.
Yes.
They give a whole list of specifications. Company must have an EPA-certified renovator on staff. What if someone's only paying $2,000 to have the breaker box moved from the basement, and it's a local electrician doing it? Are they exempt of this?
If there's no lead touching, then it's a non-issue. If we're working around lead paint, and we're disturbing lead paint, then they'll have to have that criteria. That is not our made-up criteria, that is a federal rule that's required in the use of these federal funds.
Wouldn't the lead have to be remedied? If the lead was remediated before the electrician did the work, any electrician would be able to do the work, wouldn't they?
What we're probably going to be doing here is be letting this contract out to one general contractor, and that general contractor then would be responsible to go out and hire all these separate trades. It'd be very expensive and cumbersome to do all these separate contracts for each trade. So we'll go in and do a work write-up in relationship to how the project should be approached. When I say we, it'd be our staff, and then an engineer that we're probably going to be hiring if we do, if we raise the houses. Then we will be having one general contractor hired, actually, the homeowner will hire them. It'll be a homeowner-contractor relationship. The Borough will not be a party of the contract. And that general contractor would be responsible to make sure that they're going out and hiring all these sub-trades, and they'll be working for that general. And then we'll be overseeing and making sure that they have all the various certifications, and the lead work is being done in accordance. And the lead, the lead work will be prescribed in the specs of how that should be handled.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Hendricks? Okay. I'm going to skip around a little bit. Where am I, where are the notes? No problem. First one, the change bars on the side of these guidelines. The what law? The change bars? Yes, yes. On the side, things drawn through, things added in. Right. Were they done locally after consulting the Borough? Okay. Yeah. You talked about a 20% forgiveness per year.
Yes.
Maybe I missed it. Is it in the documentation here?
Yeah, it's on page...
No. So...
Oh, okay.
Sherry Higgy's home, remember?
Yep, she got it. All right, let me just find my next one. We're on page five, under flood insurance.
Yes.
Flood insurance shall be in the amount equal to the value of the housing rehab assistance. So let's say you are doing a rehab, and you're just relocating a breaker box. And we're talking maybe a $2,000 project.
Yeah.
Those residents are going to have to have $2,000 of flood insurance, because the cost just to underwrite that, and the policy service is probably greater than the amount of the insurance they're getting, the premium. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I agree. I, and there's always a first, but I've never seen a house where we've only done $2,000 of work.
Well, I just...
Because we had to, we had to look at all the other code-related items in the property in relationship to the whole scheme of things. And usually, and stepping aside from the elevation issue, usually, on average, we're looking at $23,000, $24,000 in rehab work, and another $7,000 in lead that we typically see in properties.
How long would they have to keep the flood insurance in force?
We would be looking at, for the five-year period, that the mortgage is out there.
Who would be the lien holder? DCD, the Borough?
The Borough would be the lien holder. And then we would share, you know, our standard mortgage documents with Attorney Cravitz to make sure he's comfortable with that. If not, and, you know, I've seen solicitors tweak their own a little. Bob's seen Snyder County's over there, we do, we have a program with the Snyder County Commissioners, and it'd be a very similar document to what we use with the County Commissioners.
Page eight, duplication of benefits.
Yes. Federal requirement.
Okay.
New to us.
Okay. If a homeowner has received aid from FEMA, PEMA, or the private flood, homeowner flood insurance, to apply for that damage, you can't cover those same items. How are we going to know whether those items have been paid for before by FEMA, PEMA?
There'll be, there'll be a certification that the homeowner has to provide to us. There'll be, there'll be a certification that the homeowner has to provide to us that they are stating that they have not received previous payouts. Or they have received previous payouts, and then they need to provide this documentation of how much that was and why those four. Because if they, if they got a check to supposedly go take care of the furnace and they, and it's, you know, five, six years old, we're not going to replace that unless, and we're running into this in Bloomsburg right now, because we have a similar, we're just starting that, a similar activity over Bloomsburg. We had a, we had a situation where they had a loss, they had a payout, they got a new furnace that was installed downstairs, now we're elevating it. Because of the nature of the furnace, it can't feed down, so we had to look at retrofitting it or maybe even having to purchase a new furnace. So we're talking to the manufacturer to see if there's a way that we can make it feed down, because most furnaces are gravity bed type things, so. In that case, we might be able to get a waiver because it was a duplication for all intents and purposes there. All more questions?
My question is, is the staff ready to make a recommendation in regard to adoption of these guidelines?
I would suggest waiting until next month.
Yes?
We flush something down.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Kelly Fialan with the Snyder County Coalition for Kids. Actually, I wanted to address this just to process, this is how this comes before council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a place?
What'd you say?
If you want the seat or you want...
I'm seated, okay.
Whatever.
At the table. Oh, at the table.
Yeah.
It's not already go. Okay.
Mr. President. So as background, and I know that Borough Councils have the benefit of this agenda packet for the weekend, it was a presentation made by the Snyder County Coalition for Kids to the zoning hearing board, and they granted by a conditional use, the use variance. But our ordinance speaks differently about it, it doesn't refer to it as use variance, it talks about a use not provided for or otherwise a use not prohibited. It's, but in any event, it wasn't not a use that was provided for, and that'd be, I'm just kind of called a not-for-profit recreation center. So the zoning hearing board granted that use in a former church building that was damaged by a fire on Eighth Street, the Christ United Methodist Church, with conditions. And there were a number of conditions, but primarily those conditions included going before the planning commission and Borough Council with a site plan as to how this envisioned plan would be implemented, and also to receive approval of the hours of operation. When the application was first presented to the zoning hearing board, and the reason why you have two different lists of requested hours of operation, between the zoning hearing board meeting and the planning commission meeting, those hours were adjusted ever so slightly. In the event that the recreation, once it is operational, might be able to offer some other earlier morning services, such as a before-school care program. You see, when they went before the zoning hearing board, the starting time was built to be 9:00 a.m. on a Monday through Friday. It is now requested and recommended by the planning commission to you that they be allowed to start as early as 7:00 a.m. and on a Thursday and at 8:00 p.m. and on a Friday 9:00 p.m. I don't think that the ending has been revised, but just in any event that there's any confusion on those two different lists of hours of operation. The last thing I'd just like to mention is that there was an additional recommendation that came out of the planning commission, and that was related to the one-way traffic circulation of traffic through the parking lot, and that the one-way directional sign also be supplemented, supplemented with one additional sign that might say, "Do not enter." And that would be posted should, or in any event, someone attempted to enter the slate from the alley, the wrong way, direction. And there's an opportunity to mount and post that sign on the back wall of the garage. With that, this is Kelly Fialan, she has, she has the title of mobilizer. And Kelly, I don't know what else you might have to offer, but...
Hi, I appreciate the chance to come in front of you all again, and I really appreciate the process also that we have gone through from February through now, and a chance to approach different committees, the zoning and the planning, to help bring some, you know, any concerns and questions to light and have it give us a chance to address those. I'm feeling pretty good about the way we stand right now. We addressed all the, especially the transportation, the entranceway, the lighting, and parking situations. I feel like, I feel pretty good about that. And the hours of operation were adjusted primarily for like preschool and, as you said, pre, you know, before school care, as that need has been identified by Snyder Union and Montour Child Development. We are hoping to get an official nod to go ahead to, I believe we have a closing to schedule, you know, the couple is okay, but this is one of the conditions for the agreement of sale, was to have, make sure that Borough Council and everybody is all in agreement before we go forward with this.
Has the community responded with fundraising?
Community has responded positively with fundraising.
I just, and this is probably for Paul. The written decision, zoning hearing board of 4th February 16, said it was a unanimous decision. However, when I get back to the signature page, we are missing a signature. Was it a unanimous decision?
It was a unanimous decision. The one member was not available for signature before the signed decision had to be nailed out to the appogee. Or provided to the appogee.
Other question?
I mean, they've met all the conditions of the zoning hearing board and all the conditions of the planning commission, correct?
Subject to your action this evening.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of the rec? Since there's a lot of people here, I don't know if there's anybody else here for the rec?
In reflection.
Anybody?
Mr. President, I'm a neighbor. My wife and I live block away, and we, I'm here in favor to support the proposal for this number of issues that we can go through. Verifiable, found there, 7th Street.
Thank you for the council member, Viker. Any other person who'd like to speak to the issue? Ready to have a motion?
Mr. President, I'd just like to offer this, and I know we all know that Councilperson Meese is now present, we now have five members present. One more than required to meet, you know, the minimum threshold, and Mr. Meese arrived about 7:30 p.m. So we did hear this whole discussion on this particular consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, is open for a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan for the Regional Engagement Center as presented.
I'd second it. Any further discussion? All in favor of your consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Let the record reflect, I abstain from voting on this issue. I provided my reasons in that Kelly Fialan is my wonderful daughter, and she may even apply to be a director of this, and they might even hire her, so I will abstain from voting. Thank you very much. This is the time where we have others in attendance who would like to speak to an issue on the agenda. There is one item coming up this evening which arises from our Borough Administration Property and Equipment Committee, and it's a matter called Public Participation Rules. It's been of interest to one member of the group here, in particular, maybe others. With the permission of council, what I'd like to do in that regard, rather than have comments on that issue at this time, wait until that committee makes its report, and if a motion is paid and seconded to adopt those rules. I will then read those rules point by point, so that everyone here will know exactly what they propose. And once that's been done, we'll invite public comment, and each person will have up to five minutes to speak to it. Is that satisfactory with members of council?
Yeah.
Yes? All right. Mr. Stoops?
Just like you to note that I'm objecting to this and that you should hear the, you should hear the comments from the public up front now, before you even consider whether or not to make a motion.
Is this your five minutes or your other topic?
Just raising an objection that the Sunshine Act says I'm allowed to raise. Continue on.
I'm asking you if you have more stuff because you have five minutes to address any topic you'd like.
If you're going to allow for public comment now, I will speak now. If you're going to wait till public comment is going to be offered after you have a motion, then I'll speak then. But I would like to raise the objection, which the Sunshine Act says I'm allowed to raise, just that you should be hearing public comment now.
Is there anyone else who would like to be heard on another topic this evening before we proceed? Yes, please come forward. Actually, if you take to the mic so they can record what you have to say.
I don't know if I should be here or not, but...
Don't forget to state your name, ma'am. State your name.
I live down here on 441 South High Street, and there's a park across from us, and it's, there's three sides that have like a swamp around it, and it's never cleaned out, and the branches fall down in it, people throw garbage in it, and the mosquitoes breed in it. And we used to go over there, but now it isn't very nice and fit to be there. And I was just wondering if somebody could go in there and clean that out.
Are you talking about the walking trail, life trail?
Right.
Okay.
So it's not along the street, it's a walking trail?
It's the life trail.
Oh, good, life trail.
You're talking about the runoff, you're talking about the runoff stream that's there.
Yes. It doesn't run off because the water's too low.
There was, there was a city, there was a city group that cleaned that last summer.
Yeah.
And I walked with the Maricopa people, I walked on the other side between the two fields, I walked the ditch and cleaned. It's part of participation.
I mean, they can take a look at it if we get some help, see if we can get some kids down there to work on it or something.
That area right along South High Street does collect a lot of debris.
Well, I had to ask one scout leader the other year that nothing was done. And then I said something about the work from there, and I guess they didn't follow either. Still the same way. See, the pipe is this high, so your water's down here, so it doesn't go, there's no drainage.
I'll make an observation of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Meese. Appreciate it. Someone else had raised, someone would like to speak to another issue.
Oh.
Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
I'm Jeremy Boyer. I'm with the Ile Keep Grove Company, and I live on 6 North First Street in Seal Grove. The reason for our visit today is, again, it's been, it's been noted in some of the recent Borough Minutes and some of the recordings that are provided online from Borough Council meetings, that there have been some updates requested concerning our status. And also, there's, there's a bit of a perception within the local media and social media that, you know, that there may be some, you know, some difficulties opening businesses in Seal Grove. So we're, one, we're, you know, we're here to, if the borough has any questions on our progress, and two, you know, any questions on our status and where we are.
In our packet this evening, we have minutes from the Eastern Snyder County Regional Sewer Authority. And I read in there that they had not heard from Cube Grove, and I'm not sure exactly what they want to hear, but something about an application or a payment.
Oh, no, it may have not hit the, the, as for his most recent meeting. A month ago, our, the last piece of information, it, the borough's consultant, engineer for sewer issues, March 14th, we received an invoice, coincidentally, from the, from the borough for reimbursement for those fees. March 23rd, I received an email personally from Paul Ziegler saying that the report was submitted to the borough, and as of Friday, we have not heard anything, so we had stopped in to just inquire about that, and received an email from the borough manager that Mr. Ziegler was putting the, was putting the recommendation together. So I'm hearing two different things.
Well, how do you view your progress? I think we're all curious.
Honestly, we, you know, we weren't, weren't exactly prepared for a lot of these things mentally, but it is, it has been a little frustrating, quite frankly.
Well, we're working on seeing, too, that things that new businesses run into in the borough are expedited. If there's something we need to do by way of ordinance changes, we're going to be looking at that. So I'll be very interested in having a conversation with you perhaps later.
Certainly.
To learn how the process has gone and how it might be improved.
Certainly.
Any questions, Paul? Go ahead, Chain.
Okay, well, this is just clarification. I think you called him Paul Ziegler, it's Alan Ziegler.
I'm sorry, it's Alan Ziegler.
And then you referenced the extra meeting minutes, and those minutes are from 17th February, so we are talking a period of time ago, so just so everyone is clear on that.
I guess, because we do sort of get a rap here, our business is in downtown Seal Grove, and it's not just been recently, for many years. Could I ask you, did you take a look around the area, and are regulations, were they within reason, or out of reason in what you might have looked at, or you maybe not have even done that? You know, going in other areas, were they reasonable to you?
We, our first serious location that we were looking at was in Borough Sun Mary. And prior to really even entering any negotiations in for that space, we went, we went right to the Sewer Authority and had an answer within 48 hours by providing material safety data sheets and just some basic information. Now, I understand, I certainly understand that their capacity, their, their system is a much different animal than, than we're experiencing here.
I see on the Chamber of Congress meeting reports from February, there's a report the Cube Grove's opening in June.
We, that is a target date.
Okay. I knew, I read it somewhere, I was looking over my papers, I apologize if it looked like I wasn't paying attention, but it's like, well, I stuck in my mind, someone said that you were, there was an opening date, so that's a target date.
That was, that was a, that was a target date when we had to print, the banner printed three months ago, and it may be beyond that, but we're gonna, we're gonna keep it up for now.
Are there any others?
Thank you.
And the others who should be heard on the matter this evening?
Mr. Irvin Densky, I have, if I could, I was totally remiss, and I did have eye contact with who I'd like to introduce at this point in time, but there's another staff member present this evening, and I'd like to introduce her. And I'd like to introduce her at this time, Mackenzie Stover. Mackenzie, please stand. So she started four Mondays ago, four Mondays ago as a recreation coordinator slash deputy zoning officer. And I apologize for not introducing you. But I think most of you have had the opportunity to meet Mackenzie. And she's been a good addition to the office.
I see, have the license hand raised? Did you wish to be heard?
Yeah. I'm Hildy. I'm the publisher of the Orange Street News. And you said that on May 1st, last meeting, you said that on May 1st that you would probably have a new police officer. I was wondering if that was still the case?
I did not exactly say that that was a target date. But there will be a motion to hire a police officer tonight, speaking.
All right, but when do you think you'll have one?
Well, I don't know what the start date would be. But if they approve him tonight, I'm not sure the exact start date.
All right.
I don't know if that would...
Do you have an estimation or...?
It would probably depend on his current employer, if he has to get notice.
Yeah, he's presently employed part-time at least somewhere, so... A lot would depend on the individual as being hired.
So you have somebody who you think is going to...
Who will be recommended tonight for council to vote or approve him for hire at some point later in this meeting.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Others?
My name's Paul Rogers. I have something that I brought up for council 10 years ago. And I hear you talking here tonight about businesses coming into the borough. 10 years ago, I brought up that if you ride into the borough, you come down Market Street. The condition of some of the buildings that are there and the visibility of trash dumpsters right on Market Street is not something that entices any business to come to town. If we are wanting to get businesses to come to town, we have to be appealing to them. I was, I managed two car dealers in 25 years. There is no way that I could have dumpsters sitting out on the street like we have here. Or if you go down further down, going towards Race Track. Some of the businesses down there are in deplorable condition. How can we entice more people to come in and want to spend their money here when you're coming in from town and it looks like there's a junkyard that you're looking at something? It's not something that encourages business. I would think that certain people, the first pride of ownership they should have, but they don't because it looks horrible. Now, I know that the businesses there that goes from the race track from the railroad tracks down. But if you count all the businesses above the railroad track, there's almost as equal a number there as in the business section. So I think it's something we should consider about sprucing up the whole area. And if you don't think that that's a good idea, go closer to Sunbury. See what it looks like over there. That's the downside. Look at the plus side, if you go into Lewisburg, you don't see buildings in deplorable condition. You don't see dumpsters on the main street. This is something that should be addressed and taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryans. I think you make some pretty wise point, Sid, as one of the Icels on council thinks that we have a maintenance code. And I know it's not easy to enforce because there's some people who say they simply cannot afford to do the maintenance we would like to see. But on the other hand, when a property is not maintained, it brings down the value of their neighboring properties. So I'm not sure how we will address this. Maybe it goes to our Borough Administration Property Committee, Mr. Carroll?
He's raising it, saying...
Well, we've had this discussion. What I'd like you to do, if you wouldn't mind, since we do have a new deputy zoning officer, if you would give her call and schedule another meeting and going over those views. We have a new lady now, just remember that. So it'll help her bring her up to speed on things. And maybe some new insight that she might have, maybe could make some recommendations back to us.
I've discussed this with her, with Paul, with you. I haven't discussed it yet, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying.
With her previous, her predecessor. And the predecessor before that.
I understand, I understand. Things sometimes are...
And also the previous borough manager.
I understand, I understand. You and I have had many conversations. And I, again, shared with our deputy...
And this is something that I'm beating at their voices. I'd like to know when I'll stop.
No, no, again, I want to bring her up to speed and seeing if maybe she brings some new light to us as well. And maybe that'll get some ground moving and seeing where in fact where it needs to lay and maybe look at those changes that we need to go and do things. What he's talking about is, if you notice dumpsters, as he indicated, if you go anywhere else, or the CDS when it was built, they put a fence around it, they put slating in there. You wouldn't notice it as much. It's all sort of covered up and not exposed out into the public. And we have some businesses that have had that because we have no regulations to indicate that they must put their dumpsters behind a screen barrier. We have a gentleman down the end of town who has a lot of cars that he works on all the time and moves them, and some don't move. And it was brought to our attention on that, too. But I think if you would take the time and maybe you two could get together, get some thoughts, and maybe then from there, we'll see if we can come up with something. And I apologize. I know it takes some time to get something done.
10 years?
I'm sorry.
Any others who would like to speak to any other topic before we move to committee reports? All right, that brings us to Finance and Budget Committee, Mr. Charles.
Finance Committee met today at 1:00. We reviewed all the bills. There was nothing abnormal. I make a motion that we pay the bills as presented today.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, give your consent by saying aye. Aye.
I believe we have one exoneration, Paul?
We do. Person, first name James, last name looks like Share, S-H-A-R-E. Reason for the request is he is deceased. And this would be granting an exemption for the years 2012, 2013, and 2014. $5.50 for each of those three years. So your total is $16.50.
I make a motion to grant those exemptions.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye. Aye.
In your handout, we have the general fund budget. It's a quarterly report on where we stand. And it's just an FYI. It's in this blue sheet right here. It's always hard to get an accurate account of where we're at in the first three months of the year. But long about June, we really get, we start to get a good feel for where we're at. So that's for your information to look over. If you have any questions, you can ask Jerry. We have a request to approve Act 141, election of the Gelnet Funds. That's this blue sheet in your packet. And we do this once a year. And what it does is it outlines the distribution of the fund and gives us an estimate of what we're going to get. If you look at it, it has the fund's fair market value. Last day of fiscal 2015 was $5,648,000, almost $939. So a three-year average of $5,657,000. And then it gives the anticipated, the new distribution amount beginning March 2016 check is $18,858.62 a month. So I make a motion that we approve the Act 141 election and financial code.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just a matter of information to the public. This Rudy Gelnet Trust was an unusual and spectacular gift from a resident of the borough of Seal Grove. This statute that's referred to as 141 means that the borough will receive 4% of the value of the fund as calculated December 31st, rolling on the year average. And so they asked us to approve that calculation. So that's the motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
The next item we have is the word contract for the 2016 Handicap Grant Project. The big calculations are here. Boy, help me on the pronunciation of that.
Walnut.
Walnut.
Glenn, did you want to talk on this?
If council would like for me to present this, I would be more than happy to.
Oh, that'd be great.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you, and good evening. As council is aware, one of the projects that it funds with its community development welfare program is the upgrade and rehabilitation or replacement of curb cut ramps throughout the borough. Each year, the borough identifies a specific street within the borough for reconstruction. And those curb cuts that are associated with that particular street are those curb cuts that are funded in your federal CPG program that year. On March 31st, there was a bid opening for 10, I believe, curb ramps that are going to be upgraded along Broad Street. There were, there were two bidders. One from HRI Incorporated for $58,931. And the second bid was from Walnut Construction Incorporated for $46,440. Cedar Cog did review the bid to middle from Walnut and it was in compliance with all the federal regulations and requirements. We did recommend to the project engineer, Coopartn Associates, that we approve the bid to middle and we recommended, as long as the engineer recommended approval to council, that they consider awarding a contract for the 2016 curb ramp project to Walnut Construction Incorporated
Questioning on the window for the construction period. I'm assuming this is after school lets out and before they return in the fall.
I know it's a 60-day construction window, so I'm not sure when they're going to start. Yeah, that notice, of course, it can be issued.
Well, I'm not sure on the handicap ramps.
Yeah.
The street construction...
They can be done depending on the strip of the street.
We need the ramps done first before we do the street.
Well, we can't, we can't be closing the, all four inner, or all... I'm not sure which identified 10 corners you're looking at. But, you know, when we have kids walking to school, we're liable a problem if we have intersection closed.
Maybe we're going to have to look at sides of the street. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. But the idea is to have the ramp project completed prior to the street program starting. And my mistake, we want the street program that coincide with the summer months, the traditional summer months. But we'll have to work with the contractor on that, Mr. Peders.
It's usually one or two at each intersection. But there's one intersection and three. I think Independence at three.
Well, just so we have a safe way for the kids to get school.
Yeah, on West Independent Street and Broad Street, there's three routes to street. And then on West Chestnut Street and Broad, there's two. Huckleberry Alley and Broad, there's two. West Snyder Street and Broad is one. Blackberry Alley and Broad is one. And then you add a Blackberry in the south. So there's actually two on Blackberry Alley.
The bid tabulation that I'm looking at notes that contract documents are being reviewed by borough engineer and Cedar Cog for compliance as your review been completed.
Yes, yes. Cedar Cog did review the bid to middle and we were satisfied with the middles. They are compliant with the CPG federal regulations and requirements. And we did recommend to council, as well as the project engineer, Coopartn Associates, that they recommend to council to Walnut.
Any questions or ready for a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the contract to Walnut Construction. The apparent bidder.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Item six, I'll defer that to Manager Williams. The word contract for demolition of the 6,000 South Third Street.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. The borough was authorized to seek bids for the demolition of a particular dwelling, actually a vacant dwelling on the Ilocu, the address being 106 South Third Street. Owner of the property is Willie Briner. After the bid was advertised, there was two addendums that were provided to the, a list of eight contractors that we mailed the invitation to. Last week, there was a onsite meeting held and two contractors came to the meeting. It was not a required meeting. They volunteered to come. And we just have received one bid proposal, which was open today at 4:00 p.m. And the price is $16,400. That's $16,400. It's apparent that they had met all the criteria of the bid specifications. And that's for your consideration this evening. Should you agree to grant a two Northeast Industrial Services Corporation, 507 North Schimoken Street, Schimoken, Pennsylvania?
All right, floor is open. If there is a motion to award the contract for demolition, is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? Looks like this motion will fail for lack of a second. We want to next to Paul, Mr. Charles.
Okay, the next item is a wood sale, a skid steer loader. And that's on this pretty shoot. We're happy to announce that we have a bid of $18,200. We figure for the age of the skid loader, we didn't pay that much more than that when we bought it. So we're very happy with the bid. And I'm looking for the name of the person that bought it.
Evan Brown.
I make a motion to accept this bid of $18,200 for a 1996 case skid steer loader from the apparent high bidder, Evan Brown.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye. Brings us to the next committee, Public Facilities and Services Committee. Where's the other board? That brings us to the next committee, Borough Administration Property and Equipment. Mr. Chair. Before you, in your packet, you received the resolution 2016-04. It is a public participation policy. I want to thank the committee members that showed up. We've had a couple meetings since this was introduced in January. There was an amendment to that. If you look in your packet, I don't know if you had time to look at it or not. It's the yellow, bright yellow or pea green. I don't know if you want to call it that. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to read that or not. I'll let you guys look at that for just a few minutes.
As you can tell, that would be added as number five, where when we, in committee, we're only up to four recording devices, so there'd be added one. Any discussion on that?
You're making a motion to adopt resolution 2016 dash four.
I'm going to, with the amendment, unless there's a recommendation, include that at this time, or.
Do them all together.
Do them all together. Well, I want to see if there's any discussion as well. Well, I'm making a motion, I'm gonna make the motion. May I have your sec?
Well, hold on, I'm looking for the second. Is there a second to the motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. So at this time, I'm gonna take moments for the benefit of the public who is here, so you'll understand exactly the text of the public participation policy that would be adopted if the motion carries. One, cell phone pagers. Cell phones and pagers shall be turned off or vibrate during all public meetings. Leave the room with your device if communication is needed. Two, sign-in sheet. All persons attending the meeting or desiring to address council shall complete the sign-in sheet available at the entrance to council chambers before the meeting begins. Three, public comment. A public comment period will be held during each regularly scheduled council meeting. The agenda is normally published on the borough's website forty-eight hours prior to the public meeting. If an item is added to the agenda thereafter, the presiding officer shall allow members of the public to speak on that item prior to any official action. At the discretion of council, two comment periods may be allowed. If so, the second will occur prior to adjournment to allow residents and taxpayers to comment on other items of concern. Only residents and taxpayers of Seale's Grove have the right to address council. All others desiring to address council will be heard at the discretion of council. Questions and comments will be heard only after an individual has been recognized by the president. All members of the public shall be asked to speak from the podium and shall be recorded for the purpose of drafting the borough's minutes. Each person addressing council shall state his or her name and address for the record. Accommodations will be provided for ADA compliance. Each speaker during the public comment period is limited to a period not to exceed five minutes. Comments should be related to borough business at hand. Groups of citizens in attendance to address business of a similar nature for the council are encouraged to select a spokesman beforehand to present the collective viewpoints. All individuals present at the council meeting shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, and dignity. Any person or persons that cannot follow these rules may be asked to relinquish the microphone and may forfeit any balance of time remaining for comments. If this fails, the person may be requested to vacate the meeting, may be ordered to leave the meeting if deemed appropriate by a police officer, and may be charged on the crimes code of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This public participation policy shall be posted at the entrance to the borough council chambers. Four, recording devices. Those intending to use recording devices and/or video devices must inform the president prior to its use. Those using the device must keep the recording video device stationary and should not use the equipment in such a manner as to draw attention to them or disrupt the proceedings in any way. Those using devices must station all video and/or recording equipment as not to impede ingress, egress, aisles, or intrude upon light of sight of others, and may not use supplementary lighting devices. All devices shall be capable of operating on its own battery power. Number five, preview of resolutions and policies to be considered. A, whenever a proposed policy or resolution is to be considered as an item on the agenda of a borough council meeting, and such policy or resolution is not covered by the confidentiality of attorney-client privilege, litigation, personnel matter, or other open meeting exclusion, the proposed item shall be published whenever possible in advance of the borough council meeting. The published item shall have the word "draft" as a watermark. When time permits and it is feasible to do so, such watermark proposed item shall be published on the Seale's Grove Borough website. When time does not permit website publication, or it is not feasible to publish the item there, copies of the proposed items shall be made available to the public as soon as practicable on the day of borough council meeting and at the borough council meeting As council agreed earlier at this meeting, this is the time for any member of the public who would like to rise and make public comment in regard to the resolution which has been moved and seconded. Is there any member of the public who would like to make comment?
Just real quick, under items three, public comment, section F, and we're talking about limiting a speaker to five minutes. There are times where we have very complex issues. Are we tying our hands by stating a policy this way? I mean, can the president or council in general have some discretion in that five minutes?
I understand the question, and I agree with the concern. There are times when we have people speaking for longer than five minutes. Most people don't even take that much, as you know, more than I do, because we're in a long time. So I think it's in the discretion of council if it wishes to. Initially, of course, it would be the president, but if council wishes to be heard, it's the council's decision to extend.
And when we reviewed this, we looked around, and we called down to our association, and a lot of them only allow three minutes. So we were a little gracious, and they were sort of saying, you know, you only need to do three minutes. We like to give the people a little bit more opportunity to do that. Just to let the council members know as well, that also includes council members. Okay? So it's not just for the public. But you, as a councilperson, also are limited to the five-minute rule as well. So we look to the chair to give us guidance and authorization if we need to go over more time. And then, as he already indicated, it usually doesn't take us that long to make a discussion and talk about things. But I just wanted to make sure council knew that it also pertains to members of council.
I'd like to clarify something, too, and make sure I understand this correctly. Taxpayer. If someone works in the borough of Seale's Grove, owns a business or rents a business, they should be paying, what's, it's the fifty-two dollar.
Local services. Tax, fifty-two dollars.
So anyone that lives outside of Seale's Grove and works in Seale's Grove is a taxpayer of Seale's Grove. Anyone who owns a home, and they rent it, and they live outside of Seale's Grove, they pay taxes on the building, they are a taxpayer of Seale's Grove. Anybody that rents, resident is self-explanatory. Anyone that rents a home, they live in Seale's Grove, they're a resident in Seale's Grove, and if you own a home and live in Seale's Grove, you're a resident. But the taxpayer end of it is something that I didn't understand at first. My concern was that I wanted people that work in Seale's Grove, if they have concerns, that they could address council.
Any other member of council who's here? I think I saw Mr. Stoops' hand.
Vincent Stoops, I live in Seale's Grove, and you don't even know which house. Thank you, gentlemen. As always, I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak with and participate in my government as you cast votes on community matters. I was fully prepared to come tonight and speak for five and a half minutes, laying out an argument on the importance of citizen involvement in community governance and the uniqueness of the American concept of free speech. I was also prepared to come here tonight and seriously question the motivations behind tonight's proposal. That's a silly idea, though. Your minds are probably already made up, and it'll take a great deal of courage for any of you to vote no tonight. Instead, I will simply offer a few words from Cicero, a far greater man and leader than any of us in this room will ever be. Freedom is participation in power. Please be courageous and vote no. Don't take our freedom away.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this motion?
I'd just like to make a comment about fundamentals of representative form of government. This is not New England, where there are town hall meetings, people get together once a year, and the public discusses and the public votes. We have representative democracy here in Pennsylvania, where the members of the public, every other year, vote its representatives into office. The members of council are those representatives. Mr. Stoops and any member of the public can get on a soapbox and talk as long as they wish, but at this meeting, we conduct the public's business. And I'm hoping that those of you who are here recognize that reasonable limits are necessary for the conduct of your business. And so we have searched other boroughs, townships, our borough's association for guidance, and that, the wisdom we found there is contained in this resolution. So are you ready for the vote? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is community activities and public affairs, Mr. Leece.
I'm doing an application for a street closure. This is on Pear Street, it's actually a half block from Eighth Street, Blueberry Alley for a public auction, as I talked to Brad yesterday, and to verify that they would be contacting the fire police and Al Garlock to make sure everything is up to snuff there, and that they would be putting barricades on. At each end of Pear Street Borough would be blocked off, and they should be, that that would take place. In light of that, I make a motion to approve this application for a street closure.
I second it. Moved and seconded. Any discussion, all in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
I carries. Next item.
Did you skip them all?
I took the one at the top of my sheet.
Purple.
He is.
Is that the Pear Street?
I don't remember.
The second one I have is actually not a street closure. It is only for crossing the streets, and it's a five-k run-walk, which will be held on the school property. There's going to be a gathering at the Rotary Field in the morning at seven-thirty, and then the five-k walk and run will commence at nine o'clock, be held until approximately ten fifteen. This is, I mean, it's not an application for a street closure, it's more for approval to.
Run the event, crossing streets.
Right, exactly. So I don't see where there's any issues here. I know there are, I don't know if they have, in fact, got hold of the fire police and Al Garlock yet, but I did talk to Jennifer, and she said that they were gonna get a hold of them, and wouldn't able to. So in light of that, I make a motion that we accept this application.
I second. Moved and seconded. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And the last one we have is the, it's a second item, a run-walk. I didn't have much of an opportunity to, you know, find anybody to talk about this.
Mr. Leece, there was a supplemental sheet, and if you don't have any, I'll hand over mine, this arrived this afternoon.
Okay.
So these two are together?
Yeah.
It's a white sheet?
It's a white.
Well, that's.
Yeah.
They're not anticipating a large enough group of participants to justify a room closure. However, this could cause potential delays for residents between four and five P.M.
Once again, this is about safety. There are gonna be crossings of intersection, not necessarily street closures, but something that certainly certain parties should be conscious of, and that would be the fire police, the police department, just to make sure that the event is safe. I'm sure they're gonna have traffic monitors themselves.
Well, you know, it adds here that Roger Catherine has been contacted. I don't see anything that Mr. Garlock has been contacted yet. I don't see where there would be any issues here. We'd also have to make sure that, you know, the police department is notified, and that there are monitors at all of the intersections where a crossing will, you know, take place. I mean, I would like, I would like to talk to Ashley about it, just to make sure that it's coordinated in the right manner.
Do you want to call her?
But I would also make a motion to approve this tonight, with the stipulation that I would get a hold of Ashley and talk to her about making sure that we have the right safety involved here on all the crossings.
Okay. Motion?
I second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Can I ask Mr.?
There's another one.
There's another one. Move.
That's what I guess they're gonna do.
Thanks.
Are they actually asking for a street closure?
They're just, this again is not street closures, it's just they're gonna provide assistance at the intersections.
Yeah, that's what I've gathered.
Yeah, April tenth.
And it is marked here that they, well, they were gonna contact the fire police in March, and Chief Garlock was, I guess, was contacted. I'd like to also, you know, do more, I'd like to talk to her about it, make sure that everything is in line, but in light of what she has here, I'm making a motion to approve this.
I'm looking on here, this is for, normally, we're running these five Ks for a specific cause or benefit. Am I missing it in this paperwork, too, exactly? I mean, we have a name here.
Fifty-five K.
What organization is this for?
McKenzie took this one.
Oh, McKenzie.
I can help you with that. All right, so Colleen is organizing the five K for the K-5 kindergarten class.
I'm looking on here, this is for, normally, we're running these 5Ks for a specific cause or benefit. Am I missing it in this paperwork too exactly? I mean, we have a name here. What organization is this for?
Mackenzie took this one.
Oh, Mackenzie.
I can help you with that. All right, so Colleen is organizing the 5K for the K-5 kindergarten class. So it's the PTO, is it S-A, I'm not familiar with how it goes in school, I'm going to guess. But anyway, what's going on is there is going to be no closure needed for these rows. She's only doing sidewalks for the running, and at intersections, she has the track team and their collective, BIBs, to direct traffic or stop back from the thing as well, I talked to her this week. Reason why, this is a fundraiser basically that they go through, and it provides the money for the kids to go to have their yearbooks and all that kind of stuff through the school year, so that's what the 5K is for. It starts at the track, and there's also a kids' fun run within the track after the 5K takes place for the adults. So if that helps with anything. Can I keep it? Yep.
Is there a motion? Is there a sentence of motion?
Second.
Move and second it. Further discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Move and second it.
We need to tweak this form, okay? Because we spent, we talked the same issues every time. Like, I read this form, and it says, number one, it's a street closure form, and it says, I'm going to place barricades, and I've notified the police and the fire department. What if we're not closing streets, we're not placing barricades? Do they have to notify the chief, the fire chief and the police chief? It's something for your committee to look at, because we're using the same form to cover two different types of events.
Right. I really believe that the police and the fire police should be notified on every event that's going on in town because of, you know, any calls that they may have, they need to know that something is going, there's an event going on in that area.
There's traffic, a lot of traffic coming in.
I understand what you're saying, and I'll address that.
Or simply, and I'm sure you'd be able to help me out, doing this, is basically a box that says, you know, a checkbox, does roads need to be closed? You know, simple yes or no, and is this going to be on school grounds, where you won't be going off school grounds, something like that, something like that, tweaking, because I know you brought this up numerous times, the information is on here, sometimes not on here.
Me?
The next committee report would be public safety, Mr. Neff, but he is absent tonight. I'm sorry, the next would be myself managing personnel, and I have no report for the council tonight. Mr. Neff has no public safety committee report. Planning commission, do you have anything there?
You've already really addressed their action with the Senate.
Yeah. Zoning hearing board, I think they may have had other things I saw on the menu besides the rec.
They have one other hearing. They also addressed the rec. Senate, as well as the boxing music mural that you might have seen has been redone.
Civil service commission, Dalton Savage, we have a recommendation, Mr. Mayor, do you want to address this, or do you want to say that for your report?
Well, you know, I don't want to put Mr. Grimes in a position of having to speak to this, because quite honestly, I didn't call upon him to attend this evening to present. If he'd like to make a comment, that's fine. The civil service commission met last week, it was an advertised meeting. They did review the results of the written exam, the physical agility test, and the world examination, as well as by that point in time, the background investigations in fact have been completed. They do have one person, one candidate, that they'd like to propose to you this evening for consideration, an appointment as police officer. His name is Samuel Kuhms, K-U-H-M-S, and actually, it's the third. I understand he is from generally the Seal and Crow area. He is presently working as, I think, a part-time police officer. And that is the only name actually that is on the eligibility list. So they are proposing one name, one name only. In fact, the civil service commission rules and regulations allow for that. Typically, it is three names, and this particular case is the only one that's been listed on the eligibility list. Mr. Grimes, do you have anything else to think one ahead?
No, just that the reason we only had one, we originally had eight applicants. Four didn't show up for testing, and three of the others didn't pass the testing. So it kind of minimized our recommendations.
I would prefer a motion. Yeah, I would make the motion that we extend the offer of position as a police officer to Samuel Kuhms the third. Yes.
I'll second that.
Move and second it. Do we have to add any terms or conditions? Well, this would be a condition, even though he's already an existing police officer, but we need to really confirm the psychological and the physical. And this is all part of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission requirements. Perhaps that information can just be shared with the borough from his present employer, but, and I wish I had a suggested starting salary for you tonight, but I do not.
Can I make a suggestion? We hired Officer Romig last July, didn't we? Well, what I'm suggesting is we hire him at what we hired Officer Romig at, plus 3%, which is what the union rated the officers got in January in the new lease contract.
Does that make sense?
To hire him at what we hired him at, plus 3%, which would be what the contract would have been drawn to.
Yes.
Do we want to amend the motion to that?
The friendly amendment?
Isn't, isn't that, isn't the starting salary part of the contract? No. We do not specify a starting salary, a minimum salary.
There's a starting base, so there's nothing in the contract.
No, there's nothing in the contract. Because we're aware of all the other police departments on their starting salary.
It's another $40,000, sorry, that's another $40,000 bracket.
I agree to amend that. Share it with that figure being within the 2016 budget that we have. That is what we budgeted happening.
All right, so now we have the motion with the friendly amendment incorporated into it, and move and second it. Any other discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. So we've let Hillby and Shick know that our desire's been met.
We just don't have a starting date, though. She asked for the starting date. Very detailed.
Next on the agenda is Shade Tree Commission, and we do have meeting minutes in our packet from May 1st to March. That brings us to administrative reports, beginning with Mayor Jeff Reed. Everybody should have a copy of the February monthly news report, and there's also 2015 annual report in tonight's packet. Anybody have any questions on anything on these?
I noted that in the crime index, which are serious crimes index over 2013, 2014, 2015, there's been a decrease in the incidents of 29.8%. Statewide average, it is 6% decrease.
Page 2 does say the department has shown a gradual reduction in the rates of crime occurring within the borough on his annual report.
Happy to know that, happy thought with the Sagis were dealing with.
I would also, at this time, like to pass along that our department's been very stressed this past week with two very serious incidents here right now. And Susquehanna University was very complimentary, that's how professional our staff was assisting them in their tragedy out there beginning of the week, last week. And I would like to commend our staff, our officers, for what they had to do on Saturday. I think our chief was putting in something like 17 or 19 hours, another officer had 14 hours, and two others were called out for 12 hours to address and handle the situation as it needs to be done, to validate and to validate this, everything that has taken It had a rough week. And I think they did a very, very, very formidable job.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor, on the reports? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for our solicitor presence.
Yes, we have in our packet my ordinance number 824. It's our annual street ordinance requiring the installation of curving driveways and sidewalks. In this particular street, it's a broad street, coincides with what you dealt with earlier, which was putting in the ramps and also being coordinated with the project. This gives notice to the various landlords affected by this street project that they have until May 31st, 2016, which they provide the work, perform the work necessary to comply with the ordinance. If they fail to do so, then the borough will include this as part of our work to be done by the contractor. If, we'll then send an affected property owner a bill. If they don't pay the bill in 30 days, we will then leave the property. Usually, people do pay, but it's a lot cheaper to do it themselves, probably do it in less than two months to perform the work. It's been properly advertised, and you're motion to adopt it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Move and second it.
I'll second it.
Move and second it. Any discussion? I'll just make a comment. I was asking for a manager of all these letters, looks a little realistic and shocking to receive, but actually, a courtesy letter went out last year to advise them that this was coming, so they had plenty of time to think about their choices. Ready for the vote? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Engineer, he has a report in the packet, and it's from Kukar and Associates. Marson Design has no report to mention. Mr. Renesky, if there's any event that we don't have this covered in a previous set of minutes, the item that he refers to as 2016 street program, he says project can be advertised upon borough's approval. Sherry and I believe that you might have already granted that approval when we, when you authorized advertisement of the camp, curb and ramp project, as well as the street program. But if any event, you did not do that, would you consider a motion authorizing that this be advertised for bid? That is the 2016 street program.
I'll make a motion.
Move, is there a second?
Yes, I'll...
Any discussion? All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Eric? Carroll. There are treasures reports.
Everybody has a copy of the month in the board, if there's any questions. You can stop in. Do you have a question?
I'll accept questions.
I think I saw Eric stand and walk back there, didn't I?
Huh?
Eric's second.
Eric's back there.
We had our motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
I second.
And second it. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. There are measures, Mr. Williams.
Yes, you have a copy of a report for the month of March. It covers different dates, different meetings, different environment. I'd just like to state that the Borough Public Works Department has been essentially preparing for spring, even though perhaps we're looking forward to the end of winter. But that means, you know, getting the street sweeping ready and the lawn maintenance equipment ready, et cetera. Do you have any questions on the blue report?
Just a reminder that the Pennsylvania State Borough's Association 2016 Annual Conference is June 5th through the 8th at the Hershey Lodge. If you're interested in registering for the entire conference, or even, I think you can register for a single day, kind of let the borough office know. Perhaps you'll find something of interest if you just decided to attend for one of those days. Just a reminder, some of you have already remitted your financial interest statement as due by May 1st, so just a reminder about that. Item number four, and I don't know that this might require, and that may require some discussion at executive session or in an executive session, but I'm asking that you might consider, if you desire to, to participate in the auction of the property at North High Street. But we need to discuss that. We have been provided with a evaluation of the property. That is not public information at this time, but if you would like a representative of the borough to attend, you might consider that. Report on energy audit, we had a meeting today with the representatives that performed the energy audit, and that is Cam and Trampco. And it's a very detailed report, even though we have a fairly newly renovated building, we did receive the Gold Weed certification. There's still some things that we can do, some conscious things that we might be able to do to consider. I don't have any real recommendation for you this evening, but we did accept, or I'd like you to acknowledge that we have accepted the report, and that we need to pay the remaining invoice for the remaining 50% to this vendor. But the committee, I would expect it to be the property committee headed by Mr. Carroll, his committee should really take some additional time to review those recommendations. This coming Wednesday night, up at the Seal and Crow Area High School at the wood shop, and this is going to occur from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., there's going to be a home weatherization workshop, where John Oment from the Technology Education Department is going to be demonstrating certain things that perhaps a homeowner can do on their own to make the room dwelling more energy efficient, and that might include how to use a caulking gun, and where to caulk, installing weather stripping, installing insulation, and how to re-glaze windows. So anyone is invited to attend that free workshop. Thank you. That brings us to zoning, and I see we have Deputy Zoning Officer Mackenzie Spiller on the agenda. We have the report attached. I don't think we need to have... Correct. She has provided the report for you for this evening to receive that information. Similarly, under Parks and Recreation Coordinator, we have a report attached.
If anybody has any questions for us for now, or stop in the office.
Already done. Susquehanna Municipal Authority, I think we have a little bit, you know, that one?
No. Just Askra.
And we do have Eastern Snyder County Regional Store Authority, Askra, those minutes are on February, they are attached in your folder. Anything on Northeastern Snyder County Joint Department? It's time then for new business. I am not overlooking the authorization regarding an auction bid, we'll defer that to an executive session. Is there any new business with council members? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything new business to raise? Anything else from the public to raise before we go into an executive session?
The property at 8 North High Street, is there any indication of intended use for
It hasn't been decided yet, no. As you notice, it can potentially be a strategic location. It abuts the municipal parking lot, it's right adjacent to the police department, but no, that hasn't been... It's right adjacent to the police department, but no, that hasn't been really considered at this point in time.
Mr. Stuves?
How many of our tax dollars do you plan on spending on that building?
The, there's been no decision by the council to.
How many are you authorizing to bid on it?
Mr. Stuves, I'm answering your question. There's been no decision by the council at this moment, so your question has no answer to it.
Will you discuss it in public?
We will resume after the executive session and it may decide to make a bid, and it will certainly not be disclosed. It's a major option that you don't disclose your bid, you understand?
So you're going to spend tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars and not even tell us how much it is?
This is not an argument, Mr. Stuves.
No, clearly not.
And the time is eight fifty P.M. We will adjourn for an executive session, I think will be a short one. The council members will adjourn to the interior of the work area over there. If anyone would like to stay, they're welcome to stay. And if action is taken, we'll be at the resumed open meeting.
The purpose of the meeting will be going for the executive session to discuss purchase, possible purchase of real estate.
Mr. Crowe, do you have anything that you also would like to discuss as relates to litigation?
What happened with regard to escrow at the front of Judge Budok?
The time is now nine seventeen, and we're back into public session. Does anyone have a motion to vote before the council?
No action taken.
I make a motion to authorize the borough manager to attend a public sale on April forty-seventh to bid on the property at eight North High Street with a limit of ten thousand dollars above the appraised value.
Have the note, is there a second?
All seconded now.
Move and second. Another discussion. Call a vote on the question. All in favor, give your consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I think there is no further business, so motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And the second. Second. That can be in favor if they accept I say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sherry? Move and thank you.
I don't know if that applies.
Wish, wish it was true.
Would you have two?
You can have as many as you like.
Conservative Christian college students.
Sorry, I didn't.
Would you give me two for two very conservative Christian college students? They get hammered all the time.
Anyway, I mean, it's kind of ironic that you're asking for some, but your choice.